I walked down yonder, walked up inside the tree. Take your time. I'm reading Mr. Shields, he's going ahead Mr. Chairman. We're ready.
I want to call or to order our August 14th Macon County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to welcome all of you in attendance and see if you smiling faces out here haven't seen in a while, so, uh, welcome. Welcome to our new reporter, your last name is Bott Knight, correct? Good, well, welcome. We have any announcements? Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Any else?
The Calee Heritage Day, Mr. Chairman, is this Saturday? At the Heritage Center located, the Macon County Heritage Center located at Calee School. The volunteers are all working hard, they're expecting a great big day. We pray for good weather and we hope, if everything turns out, we should have about 2,500 folks of these. And this is one of the good workers right there. She'll tell you how hard they're working and, uh, so we're hoping for a big day.
I'm in a good place for supervision overlooking the school.
That's right.
Good. Anything else? All right, we'll fall, uh, we'll all rise, we'll observe a moment of silence and, uh, I'm gonna do something new tonight. I'm gonna ask our, uh, county manager to lead us in the place to lead us. Mr. Chair?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I promise you, Martha Crawford, she's here and just gonna, I think she may have a party, I don't know, make sure she got recognized.
Yeah.
She's on the jazz sheet.
All right, we don't have a public hearing tonight, so we're gonna move right into our public comment here. It looks like we have, uh, one person signed up. Sheila Jenkins. Welcome.
Hey, I'm not Sheila Jenkins.
We're, we're, we're tag team.
Okay.
Uh, just passing around.
I'm Sarah Jane Melton and I'm the Area Agency on Aging Director for the Southwestern Commission.
Okay.
Which serves the seven southwestern counties and, um, what you are receiving information is about an event that will happen on September 7th called Senior Celebration. Um, and it's a wonderful day to honor our older adults that happened for 25-plus years, um, on, on the boundary, um, through means of the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians and through different changes and things that happened with the tribe, they were no longer able to host this event. And so, it hasn't happened for two years, um, and so, my staff as well as lots of community partners, a couple that are sitting in this room, um, have worked diligently to, um, have this event resurrected, if you will. Um, it will be at the Ramsey Center. Um, and we have had numerous sponsors, um, and got to the point where we were thinking we might not be able to pull it off, um, and so, we reached out to counties to see if they would be willing to provide a little bit of funding to allow this wonderful day to happen for senior adults, um, and so...
And, and that's why we're here. They should ask, uh, for, uh, the seven western counties if they could come up with a thousand dollars to give towards this, to make this happen. Uh, so, we're here tonight to ask if the board would approve 500. We got five from the town. So, we were asking if the board would approve 500 to go towards this event. Uh, there's usually about, there's gonna be 500.
It's gonna be 500 folks.
And it's just a day to honor, it, it's the, pays for the space, the food, and they all, and they get a good, um, gift bag.
Yeah, and, and there will be music and, um...
Well, I think it's just a big day to celebrate seniors, 16-plus.
Is that something that Lori and Mr. Rowland, they do? Or is that for the $500, is that, I'm not sure.
No, we have to approve it.
Okay, I'm not sure, but I'm gonna involve them.
Mr. Chairman, as these on to the senior services, I make a motion that we approve the $500, take it out of contingency. Uh, there will be seniors from Macon County also attending. Uh, several seniors will be attending this event. Uh, it's a wonderful event, nobody's ever got to attend, so, I put that in a form of motion, that money be taken out of contingency toward this senior celebration.
Just a second. All right, we have a second discussion. Anyone? I, I'll vote for this, I don't have an issue with it, it just, we, I think moving forward, I think it's just good for this board to have a little heads up on that we're gonna get something, I just felt like a blind sight of a financial request without any...
I think this is something that, like she'd said before, it's always been done 20-some years by them, and I think this was a kind of a last minute because so many of the seniors were disappointed, so I think if it's more of a last minute, it wasn't thought about a lot before budget time.
All right. The plan going forward is for it to be a continuing event and for that to be brought up during the budgetary time.
I don't think, I don't do about it until the end of June.
That's not, not concrete, no, we did not.
Right, okay. Um, again, I, I don't have an issue with it, I'm gonna vote for it, I think it's a good thing, just, I think from just a matter of procedure point, it's almost good when we're gonna have, be spending money to have it on our, uh, agenda at some point, whether it's, uh, new business or something, so we can at least have a little bit of heads up and do our research on it for our season. With that being said, any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Additions to, uh, anyone else like to address us for public comment? No one else? All right. Additioncy, uh, additions or changes to the agenda?
Chairman, uh, there was a request for the preparation of a resolution and release from the county to the Macon County Board of Education for a use of a portion of the East Band facility by the STEM group. And, uh, that document had been prepared and distributed to each of you. It's not on the agenda, but it does need to be acted upon.
Okay.
Tommy Jenkins is here, uh, and that's the only thing Tommy has, so if there's a way to work him in a little sooner, I hope he'd be appreciative of that.
Miss Love, she or two, I believe, I saw Miss Love.
There's a, there's a, in over text...
No, that's in addition to. I, I stand corrected, he does have the, uh...
Let me get A1.
All right, let's, let's make that A1. You can do them both at the same time.
Mr. Chairman, if we could, under new business, item number 11B, uh, Macon County Transit, if we could strike the first one of those agenda items...
Updated system safety plans?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, under, be under 11G, I guess, just a real short report on a meeting that we'll be having this coming Thursday. It's a second follow-up to our No Wrong Door meeting, just a short report on that meeting.
You wanna do that under reports, or...
It don't matter.
New business?
Wherever you want to put it, Mr. Chairman. It's a real short report, less than...
Still, I'm under reports now.
Ninety seconds.
Yeah.
Chairman, I do believe we will need a closed session this evening to preserve the attorney-client privilege and also to discuss the possible acquisitions for the property.
All right, anything else, more?
Teresa McDowell had emails, we're on July 2nd, about four, little, before an afternoon, about those 2007 tax releases. I just think, I just wanted to make sure we kinda, we could put that under 12F as releasing those 2007 taxes.
Okay, it'll be 12G, actually. 2007, that's correct, tax releases.
What's 12G?
It'll be 12, oh, I'm sorry, under consent agenda. I'm with you, I'm sorry, I was under 11. My mistake.
So, yeah, just release 2007 taxes as you're the email to view on.
Gotcha.
Mr. Chairman, we should, uh, 10A, we should, uh, strike...
Strike. All right, strike 10A under old business. All right, several changes. Anything else, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Commissioners?
Excuse me, Commissioner, you say to strike 10A, A, is that what?
A, A is an apple. All right, we got a motion to approve the agenda. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Reports and presentations. New State Division of Aging and Adult Services Award named in honor of Ms. Dorothy R. Crawford, Department of Social Services Director Patrick Bettencourt. Welcome to you, Ann, Ms. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'm gonna ask this Crawford to join me at the podium, if she will. You may remember that back in, at the February meeting, uh, we had a packed house because our Community Social Services Paramedic Program was receiving an award. There were probably other, a couple of other agenda items as well, but I remember the crowd being there for the Community Paramedic Program. That is an award, the E-Wal Bus Award, uh, which was awarded by the Department of Health and Human Services, Division of Aging and Adult Services. Division of Aging and Adult Services recently announced, they've created a new award this year. It's the Dorothy R. Crawford Award, and I'll read this if I can. It recognizes an individual or an organization that has developed innovative strategies related to or had a significant impact on the lives of older adults through adult protective services or guardianship. And in the email announcement, um, Mary Edwards, who was the lady who presented the E-Wal Bus Award to our Community Paramedic Program, uh, indicated that because Ms. Crawford is still active in her community, her church, and in various statewide organizations, as well as the senior Tar Heel legislator, she served as the Director of Macon County Department of Social Services. She's an outstanding advocate for the needs of older adults, persons with mental illnesses, and children, and has been an advocate for over 75 years, and that's why the Division of Aging and Adult Services chose to name this award for Ms. Crawford.
Because we had leadership in county commissioners and leadership in mental health, and we wanted, the reason I said they could do this was so that they would know that Raleigh extended beyond Chapel Hill.
Cheers to that.
But thank you, thank you, keep on keeping on, uh, because it's important, isn't it?
This program has another appointment this evening. That's how we stay young.
And it's a perpetual, this is, this is an ongoing, it's not just one time.
This is not just one time, this is an ongoing award, the DAS will award every year.
Awesome.
In fact, they're asking for vol, uh, the award for this year.
That's right, that's right, they're asking for nominations for this.
But thank you, thank you, and I greatly appreciate it, everyone in here is responsible, though.
Thank you, Ms. Dorothy.
Great job, well deserved, thank you.
And I've got another meeting that I'm... You know, you're not, you may not know, but you've got the same meeting night as the Legion has, and sometimes it's conflict.
Go, go get it, Ms. Crawford. Amazing.
Sure. All right, 9B, the No Wrong Door initiative. Commissioner Bill?
Uh, this coming Thursday will be the first follow-up. We had a first No Wrong Door meeting, uh, back in May, I think, and now this will be the second follow-up. Uh, it will be, where we've combined all those ideas, if you remember, we had a real cross-section of the community involved. This will be a follow-up meeting to that, actually compiled all that, and we, some things have transpired since then. We have received some funding and, uh, we'll know about the rest of our funding hopefully by that date, by Thursday, and so, we look forward. We have about 60 signed up so far that's going to attend, be basically the same folks, it's a real cross-section, so, everyone is invited, certainly the board's invited. And, uh, so, we're looking forward to, uh, to moving this program forward. We think it's, uh, the first program we know of, of its type, where we can be, uh, proactive instead of reactive when it comes to behavioral health and substance abuse, so... It's Tuesday at 2:00, from 2:00 to 5:00, it'll be at the Macon Bank, not Macon Bank, it's Integra.
Thursday.
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 Thursday. 2:00 to 5:00, at the Corporate Center up on the hill. So, everyone's welcome and, uh, and I think you'll find it very informative, we'll have some very special guests there, and, uh, so, we're gonna keep moving it forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, absolutely. Moving on to old business, update on space needs analysis. Mr. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, gentlemen, this is, uh, this is not news, we've been talking about it for some time, um, and Lori and I have, have reached out, I know Lori has reached out to some other counties, as have I, we've reached out to some, uh, architectural firms to create the request for qualifications for the space needs analysis that have we, that we, as we have discussed, is a big part of this budget and a big part of the future planning effort, and it works in coordination with the CIP, which we have recently completed. In reaching out to those folks, we have crafted what we thinks, what we think accomplishes the objectives of this board for the space needs analysis. If you'll look, just to go over some things in this RFQ, we plan on issuing it here on page one, you'll see the issue date is August 27th, 2018. We will receive the sealed qualifications back, um, on Monday, September 24th, 2018, at 2:00 PM. If you keep flipping through some other dates that are important on page four here, you will see the anticipated start date for the project will be October 10th, 2018, with a completion date planned for January 25th of 2019. That will work in conjunction with the budget cycle. It should fit nicely with our, uh, budget kickoff that we do at the first of the year, so it'll be a good time for us to start looking at that final project as we move into the fiscal year 19 budget. To sum up, um, what this space needs analysis is going to do, if you'll go back to page three, um, I think these five bullet points here on the focus of the project scope do a great job in explaining what we're looking for here. The first one, it's gonna identify and assess our current space that is occupied by various county departments and agencies. The second bullet, it will identify, uh, five to 10-year projected space needs, which will consider our current and existing space deficits that we have within our county facilities at this time, and it will compare these and assess them alongside the county's CIP recommendations. And as we've, we've spoke all along, these documents are gonna work together with each other as we move forward in planning for the future. It will make suggestions, uh, from the CIP that we have, it will prioritize those and make suggestions based on these findings, uh, that the space needs analysis will uncover over the next five, 10, 15, and 20 years. So, it gives us a look at the near future as well as, uh, that 20-year horizon there. Lastly, uh, it will make recommendations with regard to providing for the space needs identified. In other words, uh, you know, could this facility, could you expand this facility? Do we need, or does the need call for a new facility? It will look at, at things of that nature. And last, but certainly not least, uh, an estimate of probable cost. They will give some ballpark cost estimates associated, um, with the findings in this space needs analysis. If you'll notice, uh, with that RFQ, you also had a list, it's an Excel spreadsheet titled Space Needs Project Summary. What you'll see here is the county properties, it's a pretty comprehensive list of, of those properties that are, that we have either owned by Macon County or that we lease, um, and it is organized by the building. You'll see here the courthouse, we have the SEC Annex, courthouse annex, courthouse right there, and you go right along to the Lakeside Drive complex, then, which all, which includes Health and Human Services, our detention center, um, the animal control building, it's that whole 185-acre parcel out there on Lakeside Drive, down through Emergency Services, uh, which is what we call the yellow building, uh, the sheriff's administrative building, as well as the Barrett Building there. And then, um, some satellite offices, the, the old Murphy Road where housing is, as you'll see there, identified, as well as Thomas High, Senior Services. A lot of these bill, a lot of these, uh, facilities that we have been discussing, um, with regards to the future and with regards to space needs in the future. So, what we have done is taken that list, as well as some of the spaces that we lease, such as the leased space that we have for the Superior Court Judge, um, the, the space we have leased for the dental clinic, and there are certain, we still need to nail them down, we do, um, I think, have some storage units outside the county, uh, where we store, uh, different supplies and things, so we wanna look, look at all those things. And we went through this comprehensive list and, and the red that you will see highlighted here are the, the buildings that were selected by administration that were, that had projects in the CIP, and we felt are representative of those buildings that we're conducting business out of on the, in, on the county level. So, in selecting that, um, we had a total of about 266,000 square feet, 430 acres, a building value of about 28 million, and a land value of about 30 million that this space needs analysis will encompass. And come in and look at these facilities and again, uh, look at any deficits we have now, um, and look at any projected deficits in the future and help us better prioritize these needs for the capital improvement plan.
Any questions?
I'm much, uh, two questions, I think.
Yes, sir.
On the spreadsheet, uh, you go down, I know it's red, you just don't, you gotta look at it, it's not in red, then we're not gonna look.
Right, and, yes, sir.
Yeah, so, uh...
Or that's recommended, we can certainly, if you got, if y'all wanna, that's why it's good to look at this, if y'all wanna put it in there, we certainly can.
Uh, I would just look, like, there for, um, you know, that half.
Right. Right, and that, that's what we were thinking, too.
And second question.
Architecture firms, that's who we're seeing. Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's...
That's specialized, yeah.
Yes, sir, yes.
And usually an architect firm will head it up, but then they may kinda subcontract with demographic builders or, uh, interior design people and other people such as that.
Some of the, some of the results of these that we have saw, um, in some of the other counties as we were looking together, putting through, putting together this RFQ, it's a very, a very detailed, detailed study that I think is really gonna assist us in, uh, projecting for these long-term needs.
You mentioned the CIP was completed?
Well, yeah, the draft CIP, the CIP, see, it is, the CIP's a living document, and basically the CIP is a planning document up until the point that we approve a budget with those projects in it. So, that, you know, it'll help us better prioritize that planning document.
And we're gonna have a continued meeting discussing that, but that's changed now?
Well, no, we still, we certainly can do that, I know, I just know that, uh, you know, we had mentioned and discussed last meeting, uh, that we need to go ahead and get moving on this space needs analysis. I think it is gonna aid us in our CIP discussions because it's going to give that third party coming in and looking at, looking at numbers, figures, uh, how people going in, people coming out, they go in and do in-depth, um, interviews with the department heads and kinda get a feel, um, for what they're conducting in and outside of that operation, and, you know, the firms that do this, of course, will be familiar, um, with many aspects of, of the business end of what our county departments, the business they're conducting there. I think it can aid us, um, potentially in a lot of ways, again, the buildings, uh, you know, we've had discussions about, uh, Senior Services Building, we've had discussions about, um, other facilities that, that are filling up to capacity, and this will give us that other set of eyes and help us, um, I think it will aid us in the discussion of, of the CIP. So, it'll be a useful tool, um, for prioritization in future budgets.
One more question, none, I just remember parks included, are all the parks free from sale, is that what they included?
Yeah, the parks, I didn't know, I did, you know, we did include, uh, that Nana Hala just because, you know, Commissioner Giggin had mentioned that and wanted to look at that. The other parks, as far as that goes, it's just gonna be hard to quantify. What you see with these studies are mostly going into buildings, counting people, and it's really hard to, to formulate that roundup.
So, according to this, Mr. Manager, the, their due back September 10?
September 24.
What did I just read?
September 10th was the due date to submit questions.
And October 10th.
For them to submit questions to us, okay.
Yeah, the, the goal is to try to get it out August 27th or somewhere close to that date, have it due back September 24th. Since this is an RFQ, it's based on qualifications, not dollars, we'll have evaluation criteria that will, you know, probably be myself, Derek, Lindsay, whoever, you know, we kinda have a little committee to independently review firms, and then we will come to you hopefully on October 9th at our regular meeting with the recommendation, you know, with the firm to move forward, and so, the, the hope is October 9th, you can approve it, and then on October 10th, they technically start the work and hopefully can wrap it up by January 25th. It's been a little over three months. The other counties we've looked at kinda had four months timeframe, but given that we would love to have this before we did our budget kickoff, we kinda put that date in there, but we've also given the flexibility to say, hey, if this, these dates look too tight, please provide us an alternative schedule that you think would work better. So, that gives the, the firms responding.
Follow-up on Commissioner Gilchrist's question, Lori, and I guess you and County Manager certainly look, there are folks out there that's done this in three or more counties? I mean, that's one of the...
Yeah, I know that's one of the qualifications. I'm assuming so because the main county that I use this from, they selected a firm based on their criteria of three, at least three...
So, that means there's some out there.
Yeah, this firm that they used was out of Charlotte, and, uh, so, yeah, there, there are some out there.
That's good, that's a good thing.
I talked to, uh, an architecture firm, uh, separate from the one that submitted, responded to the RFQ for this one, uh, and they have done this in, in a few counties in North Carolina as well.
And I think that the reason in there is because we, a county's unique, we're responsible, we're by the courthouse facilities, jail facilities, and, you know, um, sheriff's space, register of deeds, et cetera. So, I think you really wanna try to work with a firm that, you know, has that knowledge of counties and the needs there, like as far as courthouse or detention center go.
So, what do you need, Mr. Manager? Need anything to move ahead?
We were just bringing this, um, to the board, wanted to make sure, um, that you all were on board with it. We do, again, think it's a comprehensive, comprehensive...
At least gets it started down the road.
What we're looking at, and, and I would say, uh, as we work back and forth, uh, during, throughout this RFQ process, if anything comes up, uh, that we need to, to put in there, we can certainly discuss that at that time.
Good, any further questions?
What I like about it is, uh, it'd be real easy to say, I'm Jim Tate, I'm chairman of this board, I, I know exactly how Macon County ought to spend their money, I know exactly how we ought to expand our facilities, I know exactly what facilities need to be shut down, but it would be basically just my opinion, and it would probably be a...
but it would be basically just my opinion, and it would probably be a biased opinion. But when we have something like this, when you have some people that may not be from Macon County that are coming in and giving an unbiased, professional opinion, it kind of takes some of, it gives us something to lean on fairly heavily, so I like that. I like it when we have people that do this a lot more than what we do, coming in and taking a peek at what we have and where we're going and making good prognostications, as I would word, of where we're headed.
And what was it, Lori?
Prognosticator of where we're headed. So, so, yeah, I'm in favor and appreciate y'all's hard work on it. So, thank you. Paul, I'm following up with your question. I think we're, I'm ready, given this board's discretion to start, to start discussing the CIP and getting it rolling, but I think this is going to be an important, important key to it, and it'll, it'll be the evidence that we probably weigh heavily on when we make the determination on where we move.
You've got something, please.
I was going to say, it kind of takes some of our, our opinions out of it.
Now, these firms, are there any provisions in there if they've worked with other counties? Will there be any comparative level of provided services, Lord? What level of services do the taxpayers expect us to approve?
Well, the, the evaluation criteria here in the, the RFQ, you'll see, you know, experience of the firm, the individuals assigned to the project, references, excuse me, it's on, it will be on your, the last page of that RFQ, page six.
I'll post that, I agree.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. And it's, but that was, that is a, that is a concern and a very good question. We'll look for references from previous projects, as well as the experience of the firm that's dealing with these projects. We'll look at the proposed approach and methodology for conducting the study, how they're going to conduct the study. Then we'll bounce that off of counties that we have been in communications with, see how well it worked for them, the way that these firms are proposing to conduct the study. We'll also look at the proposed schedule for completing the task. And last but not least, the fee structure of the project. So it's going to, you know, putting that criteria in there of having to work with counties in the past, and RFQ alone is designed to make sure that the most highly qualified firm is rewarded the project rather than the lowest responsible bidder. So there, there are mechanisms built in, and we always in our RFQ reserve the right to reject any of the RFQ responses.
Good answer.
But, I mean, I, what, like...
No, the level of services comparing, say, Macon to Jackson County, what, the level of services that we...
I thought you meant the level of service of the responding firm.
Oh, no, 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 you know, if they've done other counties, I mean, a lot of our buildings, we're a service industry, what we are, we're giving services back to the taxpayers, we fund everything. But some counties provide more services than other counties, and at some point, I think we need to have discussions, what level, I mean, I've heard, you know, we're discussing the senior services center now, is that standard throughout the county? I've heard mention of a daycare, a, of a daycare, are those, are those levels of services comparable?
I don't, I, I, it's not going to compare, it is not going to compare our current level of service to the current level of services in other counties. What it will do is look at our current level of service and look at projected demand for that service based on demographic characteristics. And look and see that we're using the space that we have in the most efficient manner possible to continue meeting the demand of that service. In comparing services to other counties, there are, there are certain ways to do that, and that, that would be a, that would be a different, a different type of study, like a performance measurement type of study, which, you know, and we always try to, try to compare and benchmark, especially with the, with the cities around the counties in this region, on, on, and look at budget-wise and how that we're comparing and stacking on. But this study will not, it's not going to do that.
Yeah, this is...
It's going to look at us...
Facilities.
Right, right.
You're all we need.
Agreed. Anything else? Move along, moving into new business. Come on down, Mr. Jenkins, renew all the lease with Inva Tech LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good to see you again. Quick business this evening, two items, number one's to renew the lease on Inva Tech, which we have been leasing to the Business Development Center for the past year. They have our largest space there in clothing distribution, sales and distribution. Their business is going, going well last year, they've added another employee. The rate we charge them is actually the highest we's ever charged for a startup business, Business Development Center, which is $3 a foot. And we would like to continue to add as part of their three-year program, their second...
One of the handouts is a colored page showing the space that they lease, and that needs to be added to the lease, which is part of your agenda package.
How many folks employ now?
They've got three. And as you, as usual with our leases, we've got a 30-day half, in case we have some other project that we... They, they distribute the clothing, design and distribute clothing, it's not manufactured there, but they do the design work and the distribution for them. A local couple actually are head of this, this...
Hold that for them, well, I guess we need to conduct this, do this.
All right, can we get a motion to approve the renewal of the lease? Motion approved.
Same.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Can we get the next one?
Go ahead.
Oh, I just said the other blocks here.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll follow.
Okay.
That's okay. The second one also is, we've been working for a while with the STEM program, Macon County Public Schools. We have some space available that they could use for their activities, particularly their robotics program. And we have checked with the EBAE, who was an actual lender, lender when we started this project in 1986. So to make sure that the, the use of the, the use by the STEM program would fall within their requirements. And after checking with them, it's fine, it turns out that we're past the 20-year period where EDC requirements are enforced, so we're clear to, we're clear to have to sign a lease with them. The lease is actually for, doesn't involve any, any money, they won't be paying any rent just for use of the building. And it's about 1,100 square feet. I have Jennifer Love and Bob Vogel from the STEM program. Jennifer, would you like to comment if she may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, and so the space would be used for this next school year for the Franklin Megan Botts team, which is the high school robotics team. And Tech Town has been gracious in allowing us to use a space in their new facility. But last year was our first year, and we discovered very quickly that using drills and saws in their conference room was not what they thought we were going to be doing. And so we were looking for another space that would be more conducive for, for working on this robot. And our team has grown from 15 students to 25 to 30 students, so we needed a little bit larger space. I don't want to use it just for robotics, so we are also going to be starting an after-school drone club, and I've got the drone sitting in my office right now with the curriculum ready to go. And the materials and supplies purchased for this program are funds from the Golden Lee Foundation grant, which expires in December, and so those have been reallocated for this program.
Is that part of the STEM project as well?
Yes, yes. So we're, we're trying to, looking at business and industry in our community and find ways that we can provide extra opportunities and training for students in the community. And so after working with some people at the airport and talking with folks out at Clay County, looking at drones was something that we thought might be a good next step.
Unit B, is that the area that's going to be...
Actually, it's unit...
E.
Okay. This is a same STEM program that in its first year exceeded all expectations.
No, we didn't talk about how we did.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's a same STEM program, but it's going to exceed ours.
Yeah, BBC considers this a economic development project, as well, just starting a little younger.
All right, we get a motion to approve?
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. I'm sorry, I was going to answer Commissioner Hill.
Sorry, I have another question, I'm sorry.
No, he's just going to...
I've got actually, we have actually three more spaces available, 2,000-foot spaces and some office space and...
Yeah, the three are back.
Yeah, yeah. The smaller ones are a little harder to fill, especially since the economy's picked up some, doesn't seem to be as much people we can just start. Yeah, Harmony has actually moved up to...
They're doing good?
Yep, yep, everybody's doing good. New attacks down in expansion also with the, with the parks. All our local industries seem to be doing fairly well. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Thank you, Tom.
When you going to move in?
As soon as I can. Yeah, as soon as I can.
Soon as I find her keys.
I know, it's like, where's the keys? Thank you. Yes.
Ms. Angel?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Macon County Transit, just, you know, a few items of business to attend to for you. Item one was struck, so continuity of operations plan?
Yeah, I wasn't able to get my, my stuff together to get that to you, so I'll be back next month and the next month, too, so no worries, we'll give, spend some time.
All right.
So the first one, I hope you've had an opportunity to look over the coop plan, continuity of operations. This is a plan when we are, and we haven't ever been officially audited, but when our system gets reviewed for compliance with federal regulations, and is part of the system safety plan that I will be bringing to you next month, the new federal requirements for safety require transit systems to have some sort of coop. And obviously, the best way to do that, since we are part of the county, is to have one that is a Macon County coop, and since I had no clue what to do with it, I sent it to Warren Cade and said, Warren, you think you can help me out? And so Warren has, was gracious enough to go through this. It's pretty basic. You know, one of, one of the thoughts is, and the conversation, and I think Warren and I have had this conversation several times over the years, because it's one of those things that we have been asked for, but they didn't really require it until this year, so we've had several conversations. And the last coop plan that was done to the county was many, many years ago, and transit wasn't even included. And obviously, since then, and since we've had a couple of things where transit was needed, then we've been integrated into the plan. And so that's basically what this plan does, talks about how things will operate in case of, of a disaster, in case one of the facilities, the county facilities goes down. And we all know Warren's got a great handle on that, and I think he has put anything in here that would need to be in here, he's put the contacts. Like I said, I can't talk a lot about it because I'm, this is not my area, I just have to have this plan and have to have it approved. The one thing that, that I could mention is that it is going to be required to be updated on a regular basis. Everything I'm going to be bringing you from now on will have to be brought to you annually, pretty much everything, all of our plans. So we will be taking a look at it. I don't know if it's something that Warren wants to look at and at some point think about expanding into a larger plan, or if he's happy with this, that's, again, a discussion. But this met the requirements that I had to have, because this was a template that was , was sent to me as an approved template.
Sure, it looks like, I mean, what I gathered, it's really well put together.
Very well, you know, I can't appreciate Warren enough for, for taking the time to go through it and putting in what was applicable to the county. I mean, obviously, it was a boilerplate, but there are things that are just applicable to us, and Warren was great about putting that in for me.
Kim, is this going to, on the, I see some of them are semi-annual, annually, monthly? Do you have to, do you have to keep a log, do you have to submit reports?
We don't have to do any of those. The only thing that we're going to have to do is annually, and this may even become incorporated with the system safety plan, but annually, we'll come back for, obviously, it'll have to be reviewed at that point, and so I'll be pestering Warren, saying, hey, has anything changed?
If you do get an audit, you'll be ready, that's...
We will have what we need to be in compliance under federal regulations. So that was, that was the premise of doing that. I obviously don't feel, personally feel like it's a, I feel like it's a good thing for the county to have a written document that we didn't have anyway. So I think we're, we're, like I said, as far as transit goes, we're good to go the way this plan's written.
We get a motion to approve the continuity of operations plan?
So move as presented.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, updated, I don't know if this is, our agenda says Title V, the program actually says Title VI.
It is Title VI.
Title VI, okay.
It's not...
Updated Title VI plan.
It is actually Title VI. So, and I think that is what you have a copy of in your agenda, I did get that out to you in time. In the meantime, the final revision came back from the Office of Civil Rights. Talked to, to the lady who took another swipe at it this morning, or over the, actually over the last week. Got an email from her that says, I have reviewed Macon County's Title VI plan, it's gone through several edits, and I believe with a few minor corrections, it's ready to be presented to the Macon County Board of Commissioners. So her suggestions were add the date on the cover page, and I printed a new one, I did not make copies for everybody, but I did put the date of today if you so approve. Add log years on the discrimination complaints log, which I did that, and I did make copies for you guys, so you could see that that was done. I just wanted to make sure that your copies, sorry, but I could have actually handed it to you. I want you to reach across that, right, Ronnie? There you go, Paul.
Thank you.
Chester, you want a copy?
Mike is the one that's really needs one.
Yeah, I'll make sure he gets one. I wanted to make the corrections, so that you saw that they had been done before you actually made those decisions. And the second thing was, I don't know why I didn't have these out, I think I just wandered around the room, was, and, and you'll see another title as well, that on the organizational chart there, as part of the plan, it designates a, a staff in transit as a Title VI coordinator. And, and as the plan is written, if, if you took the time to look at it, it does designate myself as, as that person. So on the org chart, they want that listed. In addition to that, they also want accountable executive, and that goes back to the system safety plan, which you'll see next month. So I did want to give you the updated copy of the org chart, make sure everybody's happy with that. Gary, there you go. Just so you could see that the changes that were requested have been made, so hopefully this is the final of this. And that updates that. And so those were the only changes that she said, so they're really, really super minor changes. Other than that, nothing in the document that, that you have as part of your agenda package is different.
All right, we get a motion to approve the updated Title VI plan?
I think a motion to approve is presented.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll say.
Thank you, Kim.
Oh, and I update the table.
You want me to sign that now?
Um, actually, yes, I do want you to sign that. There's going to be some things, and I can't, Gary, I'll catch up with you later in the week, because there's going to be several things. You got a good, single hard copy? There's mine on the back.
Awesome.
And just one last note while I'm gathering my stuff up, it was mentioned earlier, I, I just wanna make sure that everybody did get the invitation, um, it, it did go out to departments, and it has gone out to the media. Uh, on the 30th of this month, we will be celebrating our 20 years of operation, so we hope that you could join us, we'll be at the transit facility from 2:00 to 4:00 on the 30th, so look forward to it.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
Thank you, guys. Yes, Ronnie, there's food. There'll be cake, there'll be cake.
All right, uh, under new business, item 11C, resolution, resolution to abandon a portion of State Route 1617 by the North Front Department of Transportation.
Chairman, uh, part of those documents that were placed in front of you at this meeting, uh, we had that resolution, uh, this is for a portion of Holt Road, the last 400 feet, uh, to be abandoned. The first 2,700 feet of Holt Road will be permanently maintained. In order for this, uh, road to be abandoned, and of course, with the property owners along that road, the North Carolina DOT requests the support of Macon County, and requests Macon County's opinion. However, Macon County doesn't make that decision in CDOT. This resolution would provide them with the go-ahead they desire from Macon County.
From you, the opposition from Rock Hill?
In this case, my understanding, the, the folks that would be affected by this are 100% in favor of this.
I have a letter here from the President of their, from the Ponderosa Homeowners Association, that says, uh, "There's 26 signed petitions representing all of the property owners who either own homes and/or property access through the, uh, last 500 feet of Holt Road." Uh, this letter also says that they were, it doesn't say it in the DOT letter, but, uh, they're requesting that, um, the DOT, uh, install one new culvert and clean the ditches prior to them turning the day over.
DOT will clean ditches?
Now, my understanding is, is that, uh, this group of homeowners, 26 homeowners, is wanting to, uh, start taking care of it and pave it, and get the DOT to do it.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Thank you, Chester.
Kim, give a short report on DOT, while we're on DOT, Mr. Chen, if you don't care. We did meet with DOT in Highlands, and a couple of things we need to report on is, number one, the 441 South, North and South median, beginning at McDonald's, extending down to, uh, the firegrounds, that's been delayed, the Corps of Engineers have had some issues, and that is now scheduled for September. Uh, people are asking why that's not been, it was scheduled, if you remember, in April and May, it's now scheduled for September. They had to finish the work, I understand, all the way to the Prentice Bridge, uh, but not, they had to finish the engineering all the way to the Prentice Bridge, as, as the road was, that was eventually gonna go sometime in the future, but the work is to begin on the median part, uh, is scheduled now for September, so that-
Shoot.
Yeah, next month. So that's, that was the latest on that, a lot of folks are asking about that. And, uh, and the, uh, the monies, it looks like, there, there will be some infrastructure money for bridges and things, not so much for secondary roads as we suspected. So, we'll keep the board updated as we, uh, continue to work on this magnificent point system that the DOT has.
All right. Thank you, Christian Bill, item 11D, agreement to provide recreation opportunities with Scaly Mountain Historical Society. Lori Hall.
Yes, this is our annual agreement that we, uh, created a year, we budgeted $5,000. There's just a slight change to the document that was in your agenda packet, on page three of that document, there was Section 13, an Iran investment act certification. The legislator changed the law, and you no longer have to include that in the agreement, so I have removed that, so that's a little change.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second, my Commissioner Gillespie, all in favor?
Uh-uh.
Thank you.
Fireworks permit application for an finale entertainment, uh, I think since I've been in commission, probably received at least 10 reviews for a drop load.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All in good-
Yep.
Set for new business, uh, eradication of board poll, sorry, Mr. County Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, you'll recall, I contacted, uh, each board member individually regarding this incident. Um, Chester had, uh, worked with Kim on this, I think, and, you know, it was, it was all good, a few guys were good with it. We had a, an accident, somebody backed into a transit van at transit. Um, basically, we went and got a quote to repair the damage. Uh, the gentleman paid us for the cost of the damage, it, he has paid in full the amount, and basically, in exchange for that, we released him, uh, for many liabilities to Macon County.
It was a rather small, I believe, 17, 1800?
$1,800.
All right.
You need a loan?
We just need to ratify, yes.
Motion to ratify.
All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good meeting tonight, uh, we'll be 7:00 PM, about two minutes prior.
You done?
Yeah, I'm done yet.
Consent agenda, uh, with the addition of the 2,007 tax releases, which we, uh, received via email. We get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I think Mike had sent you a supplement with respect to some minutes, um, in, in that as well, yeah.
We did receive that supplement, uh, Thursday, I believe, via email.
Mike, you're doing a good job, I'll pay you that, I'll give you some time.
Thanks, sir.
The, the supplement was specifically to, uh, include the full legal name, as well as the transacting business name of the entity that was the lowest responsible bidder on the South Nakin School Improvement.
I couldn't remember the exact reason, but it was a, it was a tech, it was a small technicality, maybe a large technicality.
Well, it just, it just needs to be that way because our contract with that, that entity, uh, reads that way, right? Minutes need to match it with the contract.
We get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Motion. Second, all in favor?
Uh-uh.
All right, we have, uh, two appointments, uh, one is to the library board, we have an application from Andy Schmar, 911, 9911 Buck Creek Road, I attend rotary, Mr. Schmar is a great individual, that can do good assets.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Andy. Second, all in favor?
Uh-uh.
And then, uh, just a little technicality, uh, we have to approve, uh, chairman of our TDC boards, and, uh, Tony Potts was elected by the Highlands, TDC is their chairman, we just need to rubber stamp that one, forget it.
Motion to approve, Mr. Potts.
Tony, got a second by Commissioner Gillespie. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All right, we do have, uh, reasons for closed session to, uh, preserve the attorney-client privilege, and also to discuss acquisition of real property. Uh, I expect no-
There's a possibility that there could be action, if there is some type of action that could be poured to press.
Motion to go on a closed session for the reasons stated, Mr. Chen.
We got a motion, second, go on a closed session. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All right.
End of mail.
Run, run, run. I always wonder that picture.
Hey, you don't do nothing with the option now?
No, only travel.
Yes.
Yeah. Catch my back in it.
That's amazing.
I'm a bitch, a million dollars to a dog, she broke off a piece.
That sounds pretty good.
Motion to come out of closed session, Mr. Chen.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-uh.
All right, Chester.
Um, gentlemen, as you'll recall, the county entered into an arrangement with the North Carolina State DOT to provide a right-of-way, as well as a permanent utility easement over the senior services property. As part and parcel of what was negotiated with the, um, North Carolina DOT, they agreed to make a deed for the old Chamber of Commerce property, which is adjacent to the senior services property. Uh, they consider that residual property because they acquired it as part of the project. It'll be subject to, uh, a right-of-way in some portions of it, and a permanent utility easement in other portions of it. We negotiated with the state and got the same language for, uh, that deed that we got in, uh, in the, um, language for the deed that the county gave them for the senior services property, uh, right-of-way and easement. That being in particular, the right to use the permanent utility easement area on both parcels, senior services property, as well as Chamber property, uh, and let, until such time as they might need, uh, the use of some portion of that. So, uh, I feel like we did real well there. The one hitch that we ran into is, they, they basically said they would make us a deed. I had hoped that I could get you a warranty deed from them. The North Carolina DOT does not make warranty deeds, the only thing that they make, quick claim deeds, and so, uh, before moving forward with it, I felt it necessary to let you know that, and either get your, uh, your agreement to take that quick claim deed or not. If you don't take it, as we have discussed, uh, you'll not be getting the Chamber property in any form, so.
Got a motion?
Motion to proceed.
Second.
For the quick claim. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Uh-uh.